Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. I know today is a pretty big news day. So I really appreciate you spending your Wednesday evening with us. I imagine some people will straggle in in a couple of minutes, but we'll just get started in the interest of time. You are here tonight at our second public hearing of the day of the 2021 Action Plan Draft. We are in the middle of our 30-day review and comment period of this draft. And today is just all about answering your questions, kind of demystifying what's in the plan, and just sharing a little bit about decision-making and how we used your info from the survey late last year. So I'm Kathryn Duarte. I'm a senior analyst with the Community Development Division. And joining me in just a couple of slides is Barb Van Hooy, our policy analyst.
Hi, everyone.
We have a few other colleagues from Community Development who are on the call. And as questions come in, we'll be relying on their expertise as well. So again, thanks for joining us. This probably isn't your first virtual meeting, so I just wanted to go over a few kind of digital etiquette tips or just how things work with Microsoft Teams. But you've probably noticed that you all are muted. So unfortunately, we can't hear you, but that doesn't mean you can't participate. If you are hard of hearing or you prefer to hear this presentation in another language, click on the gear icon on the should-be-bottom-right-hand corner of your screen, and that will enable the captions in English and in other languages. We will have a Q&amp;A session at the end of the presentation, but throughout the presentation, as questions come to you, please feel free to use the Q&amp;A box. And that will be at the top right-hand side of your screen. And use that to send questions. We will be sharing these slideshows, or rather, this presentation, both the recorded version and the PowerPoint on our website later this week. And we'll also publish the Q&amp;A sessions from earlier today and from tonight's session as well. Tonight's agenda is pretty simple. We're just going to go over some introductions, talk a little bit about the survey results from November and December. And then we'll go into kind of the nuts and bolts of the plan, keep it pretty high-level just to help you navigate the plan. I know, we know it's really long and not the most exciting document. So we'll give you a little cheat sheet and tell you where all the parts of note are. And then we'll just talk about how we incorporated your feedback and how we incorporate lots of feedback through different plans and other public processes that happen throughout the year. And then a little bit about the next steps. And hopefully, we'll spend the last half of the session just spending time with your questions. So keep those questions coming. Before we get started, I introduced myself and Barb. But we'd like to hear from you. So if you could use the Q&amp;A box to tell us what neighborhood you're representing, it could be a zip code, the name of your neighborhood, or if you're representing an organization. Tell us who you're representing. And I like doing this just to show that we like to share with everybody that these funds truly impact the whole city. We're not just targeting one neighborhood over another. These funds are earmarked for low-income communities across the city, both individuals, families, and neighborhoods. So yeah, we've got Naomi, our wonderful new colleague in Community Development. She helps with the ESG and CDBG project management. It looks like we have some shy attendees tonight, and that's okay. You can feel free to use the Q&amp;A. Let us know who you're representing. If there's anything we can... Any news about your neighborhood or organizations that we work with? We'd be happy to answer any questions that are specific to you and your neighborhood. Great, we've got somebody from CSNA Architects. So we'll move on. We're going to get started. I'm going to hand it over to Barb. And she's going to tell us a little bit about the methodology behind the survey that we launched last fall to get a sense of where people's priorities are. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Barb.
All right. And bear with me. I clicked in the wrong place for a moment. And let me make sure I share the right. There we go. Yes, so every year, as the city's Community Development Division is updating our plans, we really want to get input from our community for how we utilize those funds that come from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. And in order to really ensure that we most effectively use those funds, we need direct resident input to hear about their experiences and community needs. As we all know, very much has changed in the last year. And also, since we did an in-depth needs assessment as part of the five-year consolidated plan. So this 2021 Action Plan will be year two of our five-year plan. And so in November and December, we fielded a survey to hear directly from residents about what they're experiencing now and also to hear about priorities. So the next several slides will share what we found in that short survey. So we advertised it with a nice provocative question. What would you do with $5 million to help your community? So there were six questions altogether, and the responses were accepted online and by text for three weeks between November 30th and December 11th. And we received 1,277 responses. This first question was very open-ended. 1,161 people told us what they would do with $5 million for our community. And this word cloud gives a great visual of the topics that just came out in this open-ended question as well as how frequently different words were used. So we took all of those open-ended answers and coded them based on the most frequently mentioned topics. And as you can see from this graph, the single topics that were mentioned the most were homeless, housing, jobs and business, and then next, fixing roads, subsistence payments. You can see all those. And then the answers that were in the other category essentially could be divided between infrastructure and neighborhood services like transportation, sidewalks, bike lanes. Some folks mentioned internet. And then we also had several questions that are answers that we could kind of code as enrichment services, like the arts, museums, youth activities. And the percentages do not... These numbers don't add up to 100% because basically, the percentages refer to how many people mentioned each of those. Some people mentioned one or two. Some people mentioned several. And a couple of things that really jumped out for us. One of them was that the answers were really thoughtful. It was clear that people put a lot of thought into their answers. And that was really, really great to hear. And also, that many of these most important topics or themes that people mentioned are also the kind of things that we can support, that we do support through the Community Development Division. So the other five questions we asked focused on employment and housing stability. And they reflect the U.S. Census Bureau's Household Pulse Survey. This survey was started in March and provides kind of a weekly snapshot of how people's lives are being impacted by the coronavirus pandemic. So we picked some of those very similar questions for this one. And of our respondents, 70% were homeowners. And just to... It's a good reminder that our local survey is not a representative sample. It's just whoever responded to the survey. And this is an example where, in Colorado Springs, the split between renters and owners is actually really close to 50/50. So just keep that in mind as you see these responses. So here are the income questions. And as you can see in our survey, 44% of respondents said they had lost employment income since COVID, the COVID shutdown began. And then 28% expect a loss of employment income in the next four weeks. And then we asked about ability to pay rent or mortgage on time. And as you can see here, 8% of the respondents were not at all confident. And 9% only slightly confident that they would be able to pay their next rent or mortgage on time. And for comparison, if you add those two numbers together, you get 17%. And that compares with the Household Pulse Survey for Colorado, where the number is 8.6% of Coloradans who were either not current on rent or mortgage payments or had slight or no confidence that they can pay the next month's rent or mortgage on time. So for those folks who are responding to our survey, the 17% was notably higher than the Colorado percent for the Pulse Survey. And then last, we asked about the likelihood, people's perceptions of the likelihood of eviction or foreclosure within the next two months. And in these results, you can see that of our responses show the real disparity in housing security between renters and owners. Less than 5% of owners said that it was somewhat or very likely that they would be foreclosed on, while 24% of renters said that it was somewhat or very likely they would be evicted. And this reflects the general fact of owning increasing your housing security. So those are our survey results. I do want you to know that you can find more information about the Census Bureau's Household Pulse Survey at this link, which I will post in the chat. And all of this data and other feedback we received... Oh, I meant to say also, more information about local conditions and statistics you can find in the Home COS Housing Our Future Report that our division put out this year. So all of this data, as well as more feedback that Kathryn will also talk about, we received fed into the 2021 Action Plan Draft. That is what the topic of this meeting, and that is out for public discussion now. We really take the regulations for basically what HUD says we're allowed to use those funds for. And then we do our best to match those up to our community's specific needs to make the biggest impact possible and to help the people who need that the most. So we do that every year to adjust the plan. Next, Kathryn is going to dive into that plan, but I did want to pause for a minute and see if there were some questions about the survey.
I didn't see any come up, but I will mention, first of all, thank you, Barb, for walking us through the survey results. I just want to remind folks that the survey results can be seen in the appendix. I know that this document is really intimidating, but about half of it is the appendix. And the majority of that is just the raw data, all 1,300 and some comments that people sent in. So just in case anybody wanted to check out our assessment, you can read the comments for yourselves as well as just the raw analysis that came out of the survey tool. So yeah, we'll get into the actual plan document. Thanks again, Barb. The action plan, you probably wonder why we ask every year. You know, we go through this public process just to give you a sense of the planning framework that we were working with. Because these funds are coming from HUD, from a federal source, we have a certain planning framework to follow. So we work under five-year planning structures. So we are currently under year two of our five-year plan. And the annual action plan, or rather, back up, the five-year plan, which is also in as a consolidated plan, is really a substantial document, and a lot of data goes into that. We do housing needs assessment, market analysis. We do a very intense public engagement effort during that time because we're, you know, planning the next five years of funding. So there's some amount that's baked in, but the annual action plan is kind of our annual check-in to make sure, to see if any conditions have changed on the ground, which in 2020, clearly, they did. Nobody expected a pandemic to hit. So this was a great chance for us to really reassess and see where we need to shift gears a little bit. Part of that framework is, of course, reporting back out. We're telling you what we're planning to do with these funds, but then at the end of the year, we need to tell you what we did with them. So yeah, we're constantly in this cycle of planning and reporting out. And then the fourth thing in that framework is the Citizen Participation Plan, which is the document that guides how we interact with the public, how we notice things, how we give proper notice, rather, how we provide accommodations for people who... For non-English speakers or people with disabilities, just procedures for things like that. You can find this current plan and any past plans on our website. There's a little screenshot there in the lower right-hand corner. You can find anything there. And I just wanted to add one last thing just about the format of our plan. All of this, all of the questions that end... Basically, everything in the plan is working off of a HUD database. So we don't really have too much say in the format. We would like this to be more lively, a lot more colorful with some maps, a little more visual aids. But we are a little limited with the format. So that's why this next slide, I'm going to provide you with a little cheat sheet, how to navigate this bureaucratic tome. So I like to think of the action plan as split up into priorities, people, and product. The priorities are, you know, what are the guiding priorities that all of our funding falls under? Who do we serve? Who do we prioritize? Who did we work with to create this plan? And then what comes out of it? What are the outcomes? How much money are we going to be spending? How many people are going to be served? What neighborhoods will you be serving? How many housing units will be built? So all of the, you know, the outputs are really captured here. So as you're jumping around, this is a pretty good cheat sheet to just show you where all that good stuff is. Some of the stuff is... Some of the info is in tables. There's a lot of narrative just on how we, you know, came to, how we decided on our strategy, what strategies are, things like that. But tonight, I'm going to focus on the meat of what I call the meat of the plan, which is just the numbers and the strategies. So the AP 15 and the AP 38. The AP 15, of course, deals with how much money we're actually talking about. That question that we referred to in the survey, what would you do with $5 million? That's a direct reference to about how much we get every year. This year, we don't know exactly how much we're getting. So this is an estimate based on a slight nominal increase from last year. We're looking at a little over $5 million, $5.3 million from HUD plus $300,000 in program income from various programs that we have, loan programs, interest, and rental income. But the federal funds come in three... Come through three programs, three signature programs or buckets. The biggest one is Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG. That's the oldest, most established program, established in 1974. It's very flexible, covers a lot of ground, affordable housing, infrastructure, public services, economic development, things like that. It's a pretty flexible fund. Home Investment Partnership, otherwise known as HOM, that's strictly affordable housing, typically more in the housing construction or housing assistance realm. That's where all of our new construction financing comes from. And then ESG, just the kind of lime-green slice. It's the smallest slice, the least amount of money, but it's for one of the most complicated and complex problems that our community and other communities face, which is homelessness. And that program is strictly for, basically, operational assistance for homeless service providers. And that is supposed to go towards services, shelter, and housing for people directly experiencing homelessness. So each of these programs has a further split into more pie pieces. They're different... You know, if CDBG, ESG, and HOM are the programs, HUD refers to these different slices as what are the projects. So when you look at the AP 38, they're divided into projects. And these are the projects that we chose for our five-year plan. Obviously, admin, that's capped at 20%, and that pays for all of our salaries. We're not paid with local funds. All of our staff time comes from the grant. And then the remainder, the biggest chunk, is affordable housing. And that's a reflection of the need that we hear every year, year in, year out, housing, housing, housing. So the biggest chunk of our CDBG budget goes to that. And when we talk about housing as a... Our approach to housing, which is preservation and creation of housing, CDBG is really the preservation bucket. So this is where we spend money on homeowner rehab, barrier removals for low-income homeowners who need to make their homes more accessible, emergency repair. And we also partner with the Housing Authority and finance or fund the rehabilitation of some of their units in their portfolio to make them more accessible for their residents. And then I missed public infrastructure, public facilities and infrastructure, and public services. These are... Public services is capped by law. And these two are generally open for competitive award early in the year. That'll be coming this spring or summer. And that is, you know, generally goes to accessibility, housing stability, adjacent services. So the home program, as I mentioned, all housing-related. Admin is capped at 10%. CHDO, or what we call CHODOs, are community housing development organizations. And those are kind of pre-qualified developers who we support with operating funds at a minimum of 15% of our home allocation. And this year, our CHODO that we're working with is Pike's Peak Habitat for Humanity. And this year, they are planning on adding three new homes for homeownership. The majority of this pie goes to new housing construction. And that's generally multifamily. Not a whole lot of single-family construction with these funds, mostly multifamily. This year, in 2021, we expect 412 units to lease up this year. And that's lease up. We have... There are more projects in the pipeline, but this is what we're expecting people to actually move into this year. We also have a rental assistance program called TBRA, Tenant-Based Rental Assistance. And we partner, again, with the Housing Authority on those funds to assist people exiting homelessness with their rent for generally one year, but up to two years. And this is to help people exit homelessness and provide them with a safe and stable housing, typically with some case management. And then lastly, we have down payment assistance. Homeownership is definitely an important part of our affordable housing strategy. And Rocky Mountain Community Land Trust is a great partner. They help families become first-time homeowners. And we expect this year to help 10 families with buying a home. And then lastly, we have ESG. And this is a pretty cut-and-dried split up just because it's a very strict program. Admin is capped at 70%. Street and outreach together are capped at 60%. So that leaves the remainder to help with the remaining components of the program, which is homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing. Again, like I said, this is a very rigid program. Subrecipients have a lot of boxes to tick off on this one. They must partner with our local continuum of care. They have to use a common database, which we call HMIS, Homeless Management Information Systems. And they have to participate in coordinated entry. So we have to house everyone who comes into the system as a system and not just by organization. We're trying to work in concert much more seamlessly to help people get housed. And we believe, as a community or as a funder and recipients of ESG funds, that the, you know, the only way you end homelessness is with housing. So the goal of these ESG programs is specifically to keep or get people housed. So case management and low-barrier policies for these... For grantees, subrecipients of these funds is absolutely imperative. So that was just a little kind of lesson on the three main programs. But I wanted to tie back to the information that Barb was giving you about the survey results that we got. So, you know, as you're looking at these pie charts, it all seems very prescribed, like it's already baked in. So you might be wondering how your input influences these action plans. A lot, admittedly, a lot goes into these action plans, a ton of public data. We do a lot of research, the Census, Department of Labor, HMIS, that local homeless database that I was talking about, our point-in-time counts, which is our census of people experiencing homelessness. I mean, that's just the tip of the iceberg. We use a ton of this. So, you know, that's one form of engagement. We really rely on people to participate in these collection gathering, like answering the census is hugely important. Having volunteers and getting accurate counts of our populations is incredibly important. We use consultations, which are basically interviews, meetings. And we don't just do this at the end of the year. We kind of do this constantly. We try to keep up to date with our subrecipients, with peer agencies, with local nonprofits, with private funders, with neighborhood leaders. Our folks in our neighborhoods are just incredible partners in telling us about the conditions on the ground. Public engagement, like what you all are doing tonight, attending public hearings, responding to surveys, participating in polls, sending us emails, and all of your comments. And we also use existing plans. We're very cognizant of kind of civic fatigue. You know, when you're asked to fill in surveys over and over, we are very aware of that. And we try to work in concert with our colleagues at the city, in the county, and whoever else is doing substantial public participation for major plans. So we use all of these as data, essentially, for these plans. Going back to the 20... The five-year planning framework, that's really what establishes our needs and goals. But on the annual plan level, I mean, the strategies are really where the public input... Or it allows us to be very nimble. We can be very flexible with these strategies on an annual basis. We can kind of tweak, you know, how our programs do outreach. You know, who do we... you know, who do we prioritize? It's a really good place for us to incorporate the public feedback, and it's a good, a good place to start our annual check-in. So those needs and goals, those are very well documented in the five-year consolidated plan. We mentioned them in the AP 05, to the executive summary. They're, you know, baked into, to the plan all over the place. And every year, we have to kind of do a gut check and say, you know, are these still really the needs in the community? Are these really the goals that we should be looking at? These are, you know, so the general enough that we feel that they are still in line with the community need. And the pandemic didn't really change it, but rather made it that much more urgent. You know, affordable housing is that much more important when staying at home is essential for your health. So you don't catch an infectious disease. So if the needs feed into the goals and the goals feed into the strategies, this is, these are, this page is, shows the strategies that we identified in the five-year plan. And thanks to everyone that we worked with, peer agencies, members of the public, first responders. In 2021, these are some added strategies that, that we've been able to incorporate into our plan. A lot of it is, you know, essential, essential services to, for people who've lost their jobs, for people who've lost their homes, who are about to lose their homes. So we, the, these are major priorities and, and strategies that, and we need to be able to move quickly with our, our funding. So thanks, thanks for all of your input on this. We also consider other funding sources and plans. Like I mentioned, we, we try to honor the public engagement that goes into other plans, like Home COS, Plan COS, Connect COS, any neighborhood plans, any like population plans. The Age Friendly Colorado Springs Plan, organized by Innovations in Aging, is a, is a great example. The Independence Center did a wonderful study on accessibility and housing about six years ago. That's something that we often refer to. But most recently, in light of the pandemic, there are lots of other sources that we really need to be cognizant of and make sure that we're not, that we're being strategic with our funding. CARES Act funds, you know, flowed into the community through HUD, transit, all different sources. So we need to make sure that our annual entitlement funds, these funds that we're talking about, are complement these, how, how these other funds have been used. With rental assistance, you know, we are aware that the state of Colorado made some funds available in 2020. And now in 2021, we're going to have some substantial funds coming in to help with rental assistance, which is really exciting. And that, more news on that will be coming later. We know that the Paycheck Protection Program is coming back in 2021. So we are working with our subrecipients, with our economic development funds to make sure that those funds complement the PPP. So we also talk with private, with philanthropic groups and, and private donors just to make sure that we are absolutely, you know, filling in the gaps and not duplicating efforts with our funds. So next steps, this is just a reminder to everybody that you have until February 3rd to get in. Any comments, if you have any, on the plan draft? You know, we're at a point where we can, we can definitely make changes based on, on public input. So we introduce this to council next Monday. So that's, that's another chance to add any comments verbally, if you'd like, to put it in front of council. And then by February 3rd, we'll collect and incorporate all the plan feedback, and we'll have a revised draft ready. And council will approve the draft plan. Probably by that time, we'll actually hear how much HUD is gonna give us, and we'll, we'll adjust all of those amounts on a pro-rata basis. And then nothing will, the strategies and goals and all that stuff won't substantially change. We're just gonna change all the numbers across the board, however they come in. And then for those of you on the call who are wondering when the competitive awards start for 2021 funds, those will start in the spring, starting with public services and ESG. And then later, we'll open up the public facilities application. And, you know, you, you might be wondering why we're talking about plans for 2021 when we're already started. But our program year doesn't start till April 1st. So that's why we have to get this into HUD sometime before that. And then all subrecipients of our 2020, 21 funds have until the end of next March to spend them. So that's the timeline that we're working with. But for you all, that February 3rd is the date to keep in mind to send us your comments. So before we open up the Q and A, I just want to make sure you can call us, you can email us, you can sign up for updates if you want to hear more about, you know, if you want to know when the final plan is out or you want to know when, you want to receive grant updates. You can go to our website and sign up, and, and we promise we won't bug you too much. But with that, I've been talking a lot, so I'm going to open up the floor. Looks like we've got some questions published here, and we'll just jump right into this. These are just some prompts, you know, if you have any questions that came to light as a result of the presentation or specific questions about the plan, I'd be happy to, to dive into them now. Oh, wonderful. I see that Naomi has posted grant application details about some of our CARES Act funding. That's open now. And a question, do agencies handle the vetting of funds for the affordable housing to help people stay in their homes? And this was answered in the chat, but for anybody who's on the phone, we did have a follow-up question from one of our moderators. The question was, are you referring to rental assistance payments or rehab? If so, both of these programs are administered by agencies who screen applicants. And if, if that, hopefully, David, that answered your question. The, the vetting is very rigorous. I can tell you that we go through underwriting, an underwriting process both for, related to the financing, the citing, community involvement. We look at it through all angles. And I'm going to leave this open, just in case any colleagues want to jump in and help answer these verbally if, if they would like. Can we see another question? Your goal is to see about 415 housing units built this year. What is the estimated need for affordable housing units? That is a really good question. The need is much greater than 415 units. You can take a look at our Home COS document, where we look at the gap analysis. Also, our five-year plan looks at the full spectrum of, of need for affordable housing. The actual goal is, the mayor's goal is to add 1,000 units a year. And at this point, we, we are at about that number in various stages of production. 415 units are, is the number that will be ready for leasing up. There are also some other, the, the, this is including projects funded by HOM. There are also projects funded by low-income housing tax credits that aren't figured into this, into this tally. I can't speak much more directly about that because that's not really a program in my wheelhouse. But if Katie, do you have any responses to affordable housing need as it relates to what's in Home COS?
Yeah, so I was trying to craft an answer to that. The long story short is we don't track the actual number for that gap just because that number, the last time we had an update number came from the state, and they haven't updated those numbers for quite some time. It's pretty hard to put your finger on the number of affordable units that's, that are needed, mostly because some people who are making 80% AMI might be taking up a unit that is affordable for somebody at 30% AMI. So it is a really difficult number for us to track. I can tell you, the need greatly exceeds the amount of resources that we have. And our small pool of money really is doing, is doing wonders in our community, but it's just really making a very small impact. So we are definitely relying on a lot of our partners to help with affordable housing construction.
We have another question. Any consideration or plans for career development and job trainings? The economic development funds through CDBG, those will be going to, at least the CARES Act CDBG funds. We're, we've invested half a million dollars in some of our CARES Act funds to assist microenterprises, and that's small businesses with five or fewer employees who didn't have access to those SBA loans and grants last year, to do whatever it takes to make their businesses more sustainable, whether it's training employees, business planning, professional services, career development for them. It's, it's going to be pretty intense. And that program is just picking up. And it's more than likely that we will use the 2021 grant funds to add to that pot, so that they can help more small businesses. But as far as direct grants to individuals for career training, career development and job training, our economic development funds don't cover that at this moment. But we are, we are working with very small businesses for sustainability planning. And then we have another question, affordable rents. Anyone ever consider rent control? That's a great question, and that's a, that's a state legislative hurdle that we need to get over first, if that's going to happen anywhere locally in Colorado. We do track what's going on on the state legislative level. At this point, we are trying to make sure we craft and manage and execute well-done programs, so we know where the gaps are. And with rent control, I mean, it's worth mentioning that the affordable housing that we invest in, that fund that I mentioned, the Home Fund, not only does that create affordable housing for the moment, but once Home Funds are sunk into a project, that creates, that makes those units affordable for at least 20 years. So there is, it is a form of rent control that is, that's based on the unit for, for quite some time. So I'm, that doesn't, but, but rent control adjacent, but rent control for the whole community, that would have to be accomplished at the state level first. Do we have any other questions?
Yeah, Catherine, there's a couple that came through. There's one that says, thoughts on turning empty malls slash shopping centers into housing and community spaces? And I can speak specifically to the housing piece of that. There's two strategies within Home COS that really target that exact sentiment. We're working with the Land Use Review Division right now as they're updating their zoning code, which is called Retool COS. And so we are monitoring that for infill and redevelopment and just offering suggestions for how some of those spaces could be transformed into housing options. We recently did a project through our division called Rocky Mountain Apartments, which was a conversion of an office building to apartments. And we're hoping to partner with some developers on more of those types of projects. In addition, one of the other strategies is adaptive reuse. We really want to partner with more agencies, like I said, on changing vacant buildings into different types of affordable housing options. So yeah, this is definitely something that's on our radar and something that we are actively working to pursue.
And just as a general strategy, we very strongly support infill. And infill projects, I mean, land, land is expensive and it's hard to find, you know, sites for homes. So we, with Land Use Review, we have a kind of accelerated review process when it comes to affordable housing or especially infill. So creative thinking like that is highly encouraged, and we would love to invest in projects like that. And then how is the community being informed of the available resources for assistance with housing? I mean, I can only speak to how community development is sharing this information. On our website, coloradosprings.gov/community-development, we have a, we have a piece on there. It's Emergency Housing Resources. And that's for folks, you know, if you're covered, if you're potentially covered by the eviction moratorium resources on how to, how to ask for, for coverage. Our subrecipients who receive housing stability funds from us, so any eviction prevention, eviction prevention services that you may need, rental assistance, that's on our page. But for housing assistance, general information, we rely very strongly on partners like United Way, calling 211, because there are a lot of resources, they're just kind of scattered. And we can pretty much only keep track of, of folks we fund. So any issues with affordable housing, 211 is a resource. There's another group, you search for Opaso County Affordable Housing Collective. They're trying to build a clearinghouse of all, all things affordable housing, both policy and practical, like actually finding, finding those resources.
Hey Catherine, it's Naomi. I threw something else in there, in the box, which
Oh, I see it now.
Just kind of directly speaks to what you were just saying. The Community Development Office, the grant funds, particularly the CDBG and ESG funds that we administer, we don't administer directly to an individual. It'll go through one of our community partners, whether that be a nonprofit or a faith-based agency or some other type of, of public agency. So we try to work with them as much as possible to make sure that those resources that they have available are posted in areas, both, you know, online, paper, things like that, that are available for folks to take advantage of. So you won't see anything directly on our website that says, like, here's how you can get money directly from us, a check in particular. But our grant funds that, that we administer to those agencies is where people can go to kind of get those different resources and, and things of that nature.
Another question that this, this connects to it, a question that was asked at the earlier session was about the affordable multifamily, the affordable apartment units that are coming online later this year, that 412 number.
Yes.
Those are private developers, and once those are ready for lease up, they're advertised the way any other apartment they're advertised the way any other apartment would be advertised. Anybody who receives our funds have to has to do what we call affirmative marketing to make sure that people who would need it most can see it. So, you know, all the ways that you would search for housing on the internet, Craigslist, Zillow, apartment buildings should be affirmatively marketing. So, you know, as those lease up, we don't, we don't help, you know, we don't put apartment, you know, we're not a Craigslist, but we do ask them, we require of them to have a a marketing plan. So that's on the, just the affordable housing construction side. But as far as emergency housing, yeah, I would go with our partnering agencies and 211 and all those different routes. Ah, yes, you're talking about rental assistance. Yeah, that would, 211 would be the the best use. But if you were referring to, I did make mention about the Emergency Rental Assistance Program that's about to become available through the Treasury. That program is in the midst of being built right now. We don't actually, not only do we not have the money yet, but we haven't, the Treasury hasn't announced how much grantees are getting. So that will be coming soon and that's a very exciting fund that will provide a great relief to renters. It's specifically for renters. You have to make 80% of area median income or below have been affected by the pandemic. And it can help with up to 12 months of rental arrears, assuming that that's pandemic related. Or up to three years of rental assistance going forward. So that there will be quite a bit of news about that once that's put together. But right now, we know, all we know is that the program, that the Treasury is going to release these funds soon and we still have to build a program. But again, 211 will be the a big partner with getting the word out on who who can help with, who will be able to provide provide those funds. We have another question, education services. That's so it's not a specific project, so to speak, and I'm using that in the term, in the sense of the, like the pieces of the the pie. But in the wake of the pandemic, you know, a lot of our priorities have been immediate needs, which includes health, food, mental health, things like that, housing stability and also resilience. And we, we did see some proposals regarding education services and that generally just falls under public services. So if you're a nonprofit and you're eligible, education services is definitely an eligible an eligible expense. And it's, it's one that we've funded in the past. We we've funded CP C D or Head Start, Head Start classrooms throughout Colorado Springs with CARES Act funds. We we funded a a family counseling program through Atlas Prep, which provided wraparound services for students and families in need. So education services is maybe not named specifically, but it's an eligible expense under the C D B G Public Services Project. So when the application season comes around, definitely sign up for our announcements and and see if you are eligible to apply.
Catherine, I was also just reminded, thank you, Naomi, to mention that we have some renters rights workshops coming up that we just want folks to be aware of. So I'm going to post that information in the chat as well. And then we also have been building an email information list to share when funding is available, when you know, things like this, maybe some of you already are on this list, but we're trying to get a little better about sharing a lot of this information. And so if you're not already, please sign up for that list and I'll post that.
Thank you. And thank you. I see in the chat, David posted the Affordable Housing El Paso dot org website. So, I don't know, do we have? Oh, great. Thanks, Ryan. I ask, because we are a nonprofit with a day treatment slash education services and are often, we often need assistance for facilities for the students. Yeah, definitely sign up for, if you're a nonprofit and you serve low income populations, sign up for our ListServe and we, we give workshops on project readiness and organizational requirements, you know, to receive these funds. So sign up if you're, if you're interested in how these funds work and if you'd like to apply. But these are really great questions. And I don't want anybody to miss out on some of the questions that were asked earlier. So do keep in mind that we are publishing the Q and A from both sessions earlier to, from the session earlier today and from tonight so that everybody can take advantage of some of the great questions that were asked. I'm just really grateful for everyone's time today. If there's any other thoughts on the plan itself, I think it's fairly obvious that these funds don't meet the full breadth of need in the community. They're highly impactful funds. You know, they come with a lot of strings, but they, as I mentioned, with the housing, I mean, we can create 20 to 30 years of affordability with these funds. And we work really closely with neighborhoods and families to ensure really high impact outcomes. But, you know, it's never enough. So I, we're happy to talk more about, you know, how to maximize these impacts and, you know, what kind of policies might make for greater impact or how to advocate for more funds for different policies. You know, there's always more to be done. But our goal with tonight was just to show you how the funds we do have, how they work and how we are very conscientious stewards of of spending them and making sure that the most vulnerable in our community benefit from them. So we'd love to be, you know, continue to be part of the conversation about what else is needed. And so that's why we just really appreciate all of you being here tonight. So thank you. Again, check our website. Towards the end of the week, we will have the Q and As up, the slides and tonight's recording. And with that, we will end right on the dot.
Thank you, everyone. We really appreciate you being part of us.
Yes, and thank you to my wonderful colleagues, Community Development. All right. Good night, all.
Good night, everyone.